Since our invocation is going to be delivered by the Glendale Police Chaplain Don Lopman. If appropriate, gentlemen, if you're wearing a hat, if it's appropriate, please remove it. If everyone will please stand, join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation. Other way around, invocation first and then our Pledge of Allegiance. Chaplain.
Lord God, we just thank you right now for this time we didn't come together. We thank you, Lord God, that it is the time to come together, Lord God, with no individual or selfish interest, Lord God, for the good of the council and the good of the city and for the good of the people, Lord. We thank you for this time. Lord God, we ask you for knowledge, understanding, and wisdom, Lord. We thank you. Knowledge to know exactly what you want us to do here at this meeting. Understanding to know how to use it, Lord. And wisdom to lay all things before you, that your will be done. And we thank you, Lord God. We ask you for peace, for a good, quiet meeting, and it's always for your glory, Lord, with no self-interest, but it's always for your sake and for the good of our community. We thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, individuals with liberties and justice.
Thank you. All right, before we get started, I would like to remind everyone of the following. This meeting is televised live on the City of Glendale's Facebook and the YouTube pages, also as well as Glendale's own Channel 11. Our meetings are held in the Glendale Civic Center with the audience seated immediately next door across the curtain. Public health remains a priority. Face mask coverings, they're simply encouraged, but they're not required. We do request that all attendees maintain a six-foot social distance if possible. For those of you that are seated next door, please be aware that we have a screen. We can see and hear you, but you also have a screen where you can see and hear us. So with that said, if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please complete a golden colored card, not the blue one, but the golden colored card. Give it to the officer in the room, be given to the city clerk, it'll be passed along to me. If you submitted a speaker card and indicated that you wish to speak on an agenda item, I'll wait for you to make your way into the podium, to the podium in this room. We will be allowing three minutes for each speaker tonight on all agenda items. Now if you wish to speak on any item that is not on the agenda, please complete a blue colored card. So, blue colored on anything that you want to, golden colored on something that's on the agenda. Give that also to the officer in the room that'll be passed along to us. Please be aware that citizens' comment section is at the very end of each voting meeting. I do want to thank all of you for your patience. Can I get approval of the minutes for the consideration of the meeting minutes of April 13, 2020?
Yes, Mayor. I move approve the minutes of the April 13, 2021 voting meeting I submitted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I didn't hear anybody wanting to make any corrections or additions to those minutes. We have the motion in a second to approve the minutes and all signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying nay. Peers eyes have it, do have it, that motion carries. We're going to move on to our boards, commissions. For the individual nominated, please wait to come forward until Councilmember Aldama calls you, and that'll be after we receive the nomination and the vote. Councilmember Aldama, you have any nominations to offer, boards, commissions, and other bodies?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a recommendation for appointments to boards and commissions. I move to appoint Caitlin Whitaker to the Arts Commission for a term ending January 31, 2023, Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Aldama, second from Councilmember Clark to approve the citizen to a commission, as read by Councilmember Aldama. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying nay. Peers eyes have it, do have it, that motion carries. If you'll come up here, stand next to me at the podium, we'll get you sworn in. Turn it that way. Okay, so if you'll hold your right hand up, you can read off that. Okay, state, I, your name.
I, Caitlin Whitaker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution laws of Arizona.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend him against all enemies.
And defend him against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to just that, items three through 17. Items on the consent agenda are of routine nature, or they've been previously studied by the city council at a workshop session. They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Ms. Bauer, can you read the consent resolutions, item 10 through 17, please?
Resolution number R-21-28, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a grant agreement number HT-21-2922A with the city of Tucson, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Program Grant Award in the approximate amount of $113,000 for personnel expenses for Glendale Police Department participation in the West Valley Drug Enforcement Task Force. Item 10, item 11, resolution number R-21-29, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a grant agreement number HT-21-2922 with the city of Tucson, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Program Grant Award in the approximate amount of $40,000 for personnel expenses for Glendale Police Department participation in the Arizona Warrant Apprehension Network targeted enforcement detail. Item 12, resolution number R-21-30, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a highway safety contract number 2021-CIOT-012 with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the approximate amount of $6,000 for personnel services and employee-related expenses for Glendale Police Department participation in the Buckle Up Arizona Enforcement Campaign. Item 13, resolution number R-21-31, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number two to a license agreement with Maricopa County for the use of Fire Station 154 at 4439 West Peoria Avenue, Glendale Avenue. Item 14, resolution number R-21-32, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number two to a license agreement with Maricopa County for the use of City Well Site number seven at 4706 West Ocatillo Road, Glendale, Arizona. Item 15, resolution number R-21-33, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation, IGA 21-0008103-I, for the Central Core Sidewalk Gap Closure Project in the city of Glendale. Item 16, resolution number R-21-34, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into Contract Amendment Number One to an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Phoenix, Grant Number AZ-2019-003-00, and AZ-2019-014 for acceptance and expenditure of pass-through grant funding for transit services. Item 17, resolution number R-21-35, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving and authorizing submission of the Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2021, 2022 to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and for accepting a Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $2,423,635, a Home Investment Partnerships Program allocation in the amount of $686,496, and Emergency Solutions Grants funding in the amount of $211,275. That concludes the consent resolutions.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards for any of the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Okay. Councilmembers, any items that you'd like to hear separately? Perfect. Now proceed on to the action items which remain on the consent agenda. Well, we already did that, didn't we? Okay. Guess we have to. Okay. Any questions for discussion? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor. I move we approve consent agenda items three through nine and consent resolutions 10 through 17.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from Councilmembers, Vice Mayor Hugh, to approve the recommended action. We will conduct a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Aldama. How do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimous. Bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 18 for us, please?
Award of IFB-21-27 and authorization to enter into an agreement with Nina Foundry Company to provide metal castings, casting services.
Okay, you have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay, any questions on this item from any of the council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 18?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve number 18, award of IFB-21-27.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Aldama, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 19, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with KUV Consultants LLC for water and wastewater vulnerability assessment and related services.
You have any speaker cards on this?
No, sir.
Any questions from our council on this? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 19? Anybody?
Oh, Mayor. I move that we approve item number 19, authorization into a linking agreement with KUV Consultants.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, a second from Councilmember Aldama to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Mayor, I will explain my vote.
Go ahead.
On this motion and on the one to follow, I will be voting no, as they are five-year contracts. And my vote is nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries non-unanimous. Ms. Powers, will you introduce item 20, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless for Wireless Voice, Data, and Accessories.
You have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay, any questions from our council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve item 20?
Yes, Mayor. I move we enter into the linking agreement with Selo Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries non-unanimous. Public hearing land development, now move on to just that. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 21, please?
Resolution number R-21-36, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the general plan map of the city of Glendale, Arizona by approving General Plan Amendment GPA 21-01 for property located west of the northwest corner of 99th Avenue and Glendale Avenue. Ordinance number O-21-30, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning 33 acres located west of the northwest corner of 99th Avenue and Glendale Avenue from the A1 zoning district to PAD planned area development for a mixed-use development plan entitled 99th Avenue and Glendale Avenue, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide staff report this evening on the following items, item number 21, 24, 22, and 23, is interim planning administered to the director.
Thank you. We have a presentation, and as the clerk had indicated, this is GPA 21-01 and zoning The request is for a minor general plan amendment for the business park to the entertainment and mixed use. This is kind of a switch, but it is an exciting project for this area. Zone change from A1 to PAD, the 33 acres are completely planned. The vicinity map shows downtown on the east, and the area is just west of the 101 at the West Gate area. General plan site is kind of embedded in the business park area, however, we see some of that changing over time because of the lack of desire for that type of use at this point in time, but still should remain on the general plan. This is a zoning map around it, and as you can see, there are several PADs that have been approved, and we believe this will fit with it. And the area around the area in yellow was the flat amendment that you had just approved on your consent agenda this evening, so they're moving forward. Construction drawings are complete. This is an aerial photograph of the site. I won't spend a lot of time on this, but the plan here is to develop a combination of commercial on the south, multifamily in the middle to the west, a office building and an assisted living, which we believe that the multifamily will tend towards being the area where you might go live before you would go to the assisted living. And this concept is very strong throughout the country and should be a good location for it here. These are the building elevations of the structures, what they have planned. The public involvement happened on March 15 by mailing of the notices to the 300 feet area. Proposed posting was on March 12. Hearing and request advertised on the 11th of March in the Glendale Star. We did not receive any comments. April 1, 2021, the Planning Commission reviewed this, had a lot of glowing remarks about how good a project it is and recommends approval. The findings are that the PAD proposal will result in quality development product, which is consistent with the goals and objectives of the general plan. It ensures the mixed use, which we were trying to foster with housing, retail, restaurants, and integrated transit facilities in Glendale, and is consistent with the development objectives of the general plan. Recommendations for this site, conformance to 99th Avenue and Glendale PAD that was submitted by the applicant on March 3, 2021. This, I will not read the whole thing, but this is the avocation easement for the Glendale Municipal Airport. There are documents that would be required to be submitted to the city attorney and approved and recorded prior to issuance of building permits. This is number three, which is the Federal Aviation Administration requirement. If in fact there are any types of use of the site, equipment thereof that's built taller than the buildings, they also have to have FAA approval to get this project under construction. There's an in-loe payment for the north half of the future median on Glendale Avenue adjacent to the site and should be received prior to permits being issued for the first phase of development. This is based on the estimate of the city's engineer and approved by the city in general. That's the presentation on this, and again, this is a very good project.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from our council? Hearing none. Public hearing is now open on item 21, resolution number R-21-36 and ordinance number 021-30. We have any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anyone in the room wishing to speak on this item?
Ed Bull, only if you want me to.
I don't want you to.
Otherwise, I'm happy to sit down.
Kill the mic. If you're not compelled to speak, I don't think you need to. It's up to you, sir.
I'm good.
Okay, very good. Anyone else not wishing to speak on this item? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item 21, resolution R-21-36?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt resolution R-21-36.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second from the Vice Mayor to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Start with Councilmember Aldama. How do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimous. Now we're going to move on to ordinance 021-30. May I get a motion on that, please?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt ordinance number 021-30.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimous. Congratulations, sir. We are going to be pulling item 24 first. We're not going to take it away, we're just going to hear it first before item 22, so don't anybody panic. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item number 24, please?
Ordinance number O-21-33, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, state of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Section 9-471, Arizona revised statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located on the southeast corner of Northern Avenue and Reams Road, consisting of approximately 75.6 acres, to be known as Annexation Area Number 224, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Thank you. The Cubes at Glendale is an annexation. It is the final step in this Annexation 224. You can see by the vicinity map that it is on the west side, and it is on the west side of Luke Air Force Base. 75.6 acres, south and northern, east of Reams and north of the airport base. 1.2 million square feet of industrial and manufacturing is being proposed. On September 24, 2019, the council approved the pre-annexation development agreement to allow property owners to address the infrastructure needs. March 23, city council workshop, the consensus was to continue to moving forward after reviewing that information. Public hearing on the blank petition was held on April 13, and the evaluation of the fiscal improvements and the assumptions of how much revenue that would come to the city on a $250,000 basis annually, and $4.9 million on a one-time construction, sales tax, and permitting fees. You can see amongst the number of annexations that we're processing where this sits, and it's just north of apparent piece, it's 260 acres directly south. The noise contours are 65, 70, and 75, which affect the sites, so residential is obviously not something that will be in this particular area. This is a surrounding map that shows, and it's kind of hard to read, but it is just basically low-density residential and Luke Air Force Base to the south and east of this site. The general plan shows this within the Luke compatibility area, and we do work with Luke on this very closely on a day-to-day basis. We are changing the county zoning from RE43 to RE45, which is the closest resemblance of zoning in the city of Glendale's liked zoning categories. So, this evening, we're asking for you to hold the public hearing on the final adoption of this annexation. If the annexation is approved, the site would be added to the Glendale city limits in 30 days, and then I will follow up with the presentation on the zoning case after you take that action.
Any questions from our council? Hearing none. We have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, my script does not call for a public hearing on this.
I don't believe so. I think it's just the vote on the annexation.
Okay, I thought you said that you were looking for a public hearing.
I'm sorry if I said that. It is basically the adoption.
Okay, all right, well, okay, I thought you, all right. That's fine. So can I get a motion, please?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt ordinance number 021-33.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, I have a second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion does carry. So now we're going to go backwards.
Item 22, Mayor, if that's helpful.
I was thinking, I had that marked. Item 22. Ms. Bauer.
Ordinance number O-21-31, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, rezoning 75.6 acres located at the southeast corner of Northern Avenue and Reams Road from the RR45 zoning district to PAD planned area development for an industrial development plan entitled The Cubes at Glendale, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of council, this zoning case 21-04 is the follow-up to the actual annexation you just passed, and it is to rezone 75.6 acres from the RE43 to the planned area development. The 260-acre project directly south was already annexed and zoned, and the applicant is Mike Withy, who is here this evening if you choose to have some comments. This is the vicinity map again, with the downtown on the right, and you can see we are again on the west side of Luke Air Force Base, south and northern. The site, The Cubes, is within the Luke Air Force land use area, compatibility area. This is a zoning map around the site, and there is the issue, and you see the PAD to the south that this will actually tie into, and then loop directly to the east. This is an aerial photo, which you can see most of this is farmland, and there is very low-density development further to the west. Again, this is how it ties, and the noise contours affect the site to the south as well as to the site to the north, and they are 65, 70, and 75. The land use, minor land use in the Reams Ranch PAD includes typical M1 and C2 or commercial, general-type warehousing and wholesaling and office space. You can see by virtue of this, there's 60% lot coverage. There was 100-foot height limit approved in the county, and we are working with that with Luke on a daily basis. It increases the floor area racial, some signage, but no billboards will be allowed within it. This is generally how the site is laid out, and it is working its way through our process and hopefully to design review and building permits in the near future. These are some of the elevations for your benefit this evening. They're going to be very large buildings, but having a lot of activity with under roof. The public notice went out March 3. The site was posted on the 12th of March of this year. Requested advertising was on the 7th, and hearing notices were on the March 12. No comments were received. The Planning Commission on April 1 voted to approve this application with number six, which says billboards and digital billboards are not allowed, and a new stipulation, number nine, stating that the maximum building height, 54 feet, from that, this is from natural grade, I'm going to correct this this evening and say from finished floor elevation. It should, it was something I clarified at the Planning Commission, and we just needed to get it clarified again this evening. But Luke is on board with this height limit, and so is the applicant. These are the types of things, and I won't read through them all, but these are the things that we work with Luke on to try to come up with a plan of attack on each one of these sites. And you can see they're pretty comprehensive, but they're not here to say, they're demanding them, they're having us work them into, excuse me, the process. And so, they don't want anything that affects the main line of the jets taking on and off, and then anything that could affect, if there was an accident or something with one of the planes, that they wouldn't be hitting buildings, or there wouldn't be things like flooding that would flood the base itself. All those things, we're going through with them, the flight patterns, everything, and it's changing on a day-to-day basis with technology. So, I just wanted to point that out, that it takes an effort from the time these come in until they go out, if they're within the compatibility area, to approve them. The findings on this proposed rezoning is consistent, and in the location development objectives of the general plan, the proposal is compatible with Reams Ranch PAD, which is to the south and under the same ownership. The recommendations are here from staff for approval of zoning 2104. Development shall be in conformance with the Cubes Glendale PAD development narrative of March 26, 2021. There will be onsite retention, being required of a 100 or 2-year storm, and again, this is very much stated upfront so that it doesn't affect Luke. All power lines adjacent to the site will be placed underground, and the requirement of right-of-way of 55 feet is required for Reams and Northern Avenue, and the FAA evaluation and airport analysis may be required as part of the design review. Again, are working with our fellow Air Force Base. Billboards and digital are not allowed. Design review approval is required before development starts, and any proposed docks, trailers, truck trailers, parking will be screened from the site with eight-foot walls, decorative walls along Northern and Reams, and the maximum building height, again here, did get corrected at 54 feet. That's the end of the information I have for you on the Cubes at Glendale.
Any questions from our council? Hearing none. I was trying to figure out why our attorney was sitting out there, and I realized Mr. Withy and Mr. Bailey look a lot alike. A lot alike. Could almost be brothers. Okay, with that, public hearing is now open on item 22, Ordinance 021-31. Do we have any speaker cards? You said no?
No, sir.
Anyone in the room wishing to speak on this item? Hearing none. Public hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion on item 22, Ordinance 021-31?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt Ordinance Number 021-31.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from Councilmember Eldama to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimous. We'll now move on to land development actions. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 23, please?
Ordinance Number 021-32, an ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Section 9-471, Arizona revised statutes and its amendments by annexing certain territory located north of the 152nd Avenue and Camelback Road intersection, consisting of approximately 78.03 acres, to be known as Annexation Area Number 222, amending the zoning map, providing for an effective date, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of council, you've seen this as well three times over the last several months, but the Annexation 222 is for adoption this evening. And again, I'll briefly go through this. The vicinity map shows downtown on the east side, and this is on the southeastern portion of Luke Air Force Base. It's 78 acres. It's north of Camelback, west of 152nd Avenue, and south of the Air Force Base. 595,080 square feet of industrial and development is planned. The council gave us direction to move forward with this in March 23rd of 2021. At that point, in April 13th, it was scheduled to have a public hearing on the blank petition. This was the evaluation of the information that we would, the revenues that would be extended to the city over a yearly basis of $440,000 and $4.8 million approximately in sales tax and permits. Again, this is a lot of activity going on in this particular area, but we plan on bringing all of these through in a reasonable timeframe, and this one, again, is along the southern border of Luke Air Force Base. The noise contours, excuse me, are again similar, 65, 70, and 75. The surrounding land use here, again, you have an area to the north, remains in the county. This site has the City of Goodyear on the south, Maricopa County on the east. West is Maricopa County and Luke Air Force Base to the north. Again, it's in the Luke Air Force Land Use Compatibility Area. And existing like zoning, this is the one that actually had an approved case in the county, which took out all the residential, and we were replacing it with PAD area, Planned Area Development, to capture what they had from the county. City Council public hearing, again, this is where it's said for the adoption, and I don't believe you need the public hearing, and if you do approve it, it'll become effective in 30 days and added to the city boundary. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Seeing none. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Perfect. Can I get a motion on item 23, Ordinance 021-32?
Yes, Mayor. I move we pass and adopt Ordinance Number 021-32.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimous. Ordinances, we'll now move on to just that. Item 25, we already did, yes?
No, sir.
Let's not do that again, no?
Ordinance Number 021-34, an ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a utility easement in favor of Arizona Public Service located at the Glendale Regional Public Safety Training Center, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff comment on Ordinance Number 021-34 is Jamie Chapin, Principal Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Mayor and council members. In 2019, the city entered into an agreement with Arizona Public Service Company for the Take Charge Arizona Electric Charging Station Pilot Program. As part of the program, APS is installing facilities at the Glendale Regional Public Safety Training Center. The facilities will not only include the stations themselves, but they also have to install electric lines across the property. So, this easement will allow APS access to maintain and operate the facilities. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Hearing none. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion for Ordinance 021-34, item 25?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we pass and adopt Ordinance Number 021-34 and waive reading beyond the title.
Second.
Councilmember Turner, second from Councilmember Clark to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you please introduce item 26, Ordinance 021-35?
Ordinance Number 021-35, an ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of conveyances of easements, warranty deeds, and dedication of public rights of way at various locations throughout the city, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of the ordinance.
Mayor, members of council, here to provide staff report on item number 26 is, again, our Principal Engineer, Jamie Chapin.
Mayor and council members, with this ordinance, the city will be accepting warranty deeds, dedications of right-of-way, easements for water lines, sewer lines, and public utilities, and these are all in support of development occurring throughout the city. Staff is recommending acceptance of the real property interests so that the city may access and maintain their facilities on private property. Thank you.
Okay, we have any questions from the council? Speaker cards? Is that a no?
No, sir.
Okay. Can I get a motion for Ordinance 021-35, item 26?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move we adopt and approve Ordinance Number 021-35.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimous. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 27, Ordinance 021-36?
Ordinance Number 021-36, an ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing cash and appropriation balance transfers between budget items in the adopted fiscal year 2020-2021 budget.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is our Director of Budget and Finance, Lisette Camacho.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This item is to adopt an ordinance approving fiscal year 2021 cash and appropriation transfers. The transfers are consistent with the city's city code and the cash and budget appropriation transfer policy. The city's fiscal year 2021 total budget appropriation across all funds remains unchanged with this action. Exhibit A contains the details of the budget transfers, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from our council? Hearing none. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Perfect. Can I get a motion for Ordinance 021-36?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 27, Ordinance Number 021-36.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Eldama, second from Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Eldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimous. Vice Mayor, you have a motion for us?
Yes, I do. I move that we hold the next regularly scheduled City Council Workshop on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, at 12:30 PM in the Civic Center, 5750 West Glen Drive, to be followed by an executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Councilmember Clark. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Here's I have, do have, the motion carries. Council comments and suggestions, we'll now move on to just that. Councilmember Eldama, do you have any?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to thank our Glendale police officers. There's a lot of turmoil in our country, and our police or law enforcement is at the forefront. I just want to say thank you sincerely. Thank you. A lot of gratitude for what you do. You know, I sleep with my phone right next to me so that my families can contact me, and I can contact them, and so that I can contact you when I need you. And so, I want you to know how much you are welcomed, how proud I am of you, and I support you, my family does, and you are so very much needed in our city, and thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a couple of comments. Bit of trivia, tonight, one of the projects that we passed was called "The Cubes." And when I met with the developer, I asked, "How did you come up with such an unusual name?" And they explained that industrial buildings are measured by cubic square feet, which is height, width, depth. And of course, I knew it but didn't know it intuitively, and that's how they came up with the name of the cubes for that set of industrial buildings. Also, too, a very interesting piece of trivia, they ordered steel for the cubes last week. It will be delivered in October. There's a 10-month wait nationally for steel, steel girders and steel plates. I thought that very interesting, too. If anything is going to slow development down, it will not be this city, it will be the suppliers of raw materials for, for these building projects that are going up. Lastly, I am pleased to announce that we are finally going to have a groundbreaking for the lake. I am so excited, and it will be Monday, May 24th, at 9:00 AM in the morning. And, and 9:00 AM is early for me, and I'm willing to be there then, so I hope you all are as well. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Bring your back, though.
Yes.
Councilmember Melner? Councilmember Tomachoff?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
Yeah, and the only thing that I, I find it interesting that Councilmember Clark asked where they came up with the name for the cube, because I did the same thing. But, but the other thing that they may not have told you is, there's actually other locations across the United States called "The Cube," but then they identified even more, so this is "The Cube of Glendale," which I thought was pretty cool. So, anyway, other than that, I don't, I don't have anything to add to that right now, other than we got some wonderful things going on. If a person is a resident of this city and they're not, they're not just popping buttons off their shirts, being so proud, then they're not getting all the information they need.[1746.44]